Here.
Joe Conset?
Here.
I'm Nicole here, Karen McCarroll from Zappos. Matt Lemke?
Here.
You do have a question.
Thank you. Uh, moving on to our agenda, we do not have any modifications to this agenda that was sent out to us. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So.
Do you have a second?
No, second.
Any discussion? All who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda passes. Moving on to acknowledgements, uh, we have, we have one need, okay. We have no acknowledgements, so we're gonna move right on to reports. Uh, we have IQ Academy, we have John Steinbrenner here to talk about IQ Academy.
Morning.
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 Uh, looking at IQ Academy, talking first about enrollment. We have a 10% enrollment increase when compared to this time last year. We currently have 408 students enrolled with IQ Academy. Um, drops in ads every day. Um, nine of those, Mr. Lemke, are 544 students currently. That number will increase as students come in, um, and start registering for part-time classes. Um, last year at this time, we had 371. Over the course of last year, we grew by 74%. We ended the year at 647. If we follow that same rate of enrollment, by the end of this school year, we could reach over 700 students. Programming updates for the 1617 school year, we made a shift in our elementary. Elementary last year, um, depending upon when the students came in, they were just assigned a teacher. This year, we've broken it down into grade levels, so that's gonna be a little bit different. We have a K-1 teacher, a 2-3 teacher, um, Jessica Swedberg, a .5 teacher, uh, teaches 4th grade. And then Don Kenneke will be in charge of response to intervention, K through 3, and then she'll be the grade 5 teacher as well. Um, middle school will stick with their team model. We also have a 9th grade team, um, school-wide. We're working on developing an academic plan that will align with our district as well as, um, K-12 is asking for that as well. There will also be an implementation of a student assistance team, and then, of course, ongoing adjustments to enrollment processing and record keeping. Any questions?
You know, just a comment here, IQ Academy is our online school, and like you say, as we had 650-ish at the end of last year and looking to grow. Uh, and John Steinbrenner is replacing Derek Abrams, who, who has moved to the activities department. So this is John's, uh, first, uh, moment at the podium here. What's, what's your biggest challenge so far?
I think, I think the biggest challenge is, um, working through the enrollment process. Um, sometimes it's, sometimes it comes, comes a little bit later than it would in a traditional school. Um, but as students explore their options, and so we have to move kind of fast and furious to get them scheduled into the right classes and assign teachers for those courses.
Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, the 408 that are registered, uh, so far, do you know how many are elementary?
Yes.
Could you tell me?
I can't. I just need to look at the spreadsheet.
Hurry up, hurry up, hurry up.
At the mercy of the internet.
91.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Thank you for reporting. Elementary principal, we have our McKinley and Adams principal, Scott Koberg.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'll start first with kindergarten and just give you an update on enrollment. Interestingly enough, last week, we had 13 kindergarten students enroll. That's probably par for the course, however, as our secretary started back and, um, people start thinking about, uh, school. And so, um, we did pick up 13 new ones, which brought our total to 179, 179. Keeping in mind that seven of those 179 are kids that are repeating, so as of right now, we're looking at 172 new ones. If we started school tomorrow, we would have five kindergarten teachers with 22 and three kindergarten teachers with 23 in their classrooms. This is the first year we haven't had any morning-only kids register, so that's interesting. Um, but we do have 14 Monday, Wednesday, Friday. So what I do with those kids is I take, um, well, six teachers have two Monday, Wednesday, Friday kids in their classroom, and then the other two teachers each have one. Which is probably the, the best way to do that, so that on a Tuesday, Thursday, each teacher is down either two students or one student, depending on how many Monday, Wednesday, Friday kids.
Is that 14 you said, Monday, Wednesday, Friday?
Yes. So then moving to first grade, uh, we are keeping 48 first graders at McKinley, uh, for our two sections there, and then the other 147 currently would be at Adams. There's 195, 195 first graders. So, starting school tomorrow, uh, if we did, we'd have 24 or 25 kids in each first grade classroom. And then second grade, we're looking at 198. We have, uh, eight sections, um, when I looked last night, anywhere from 24 to 26, uh, kids per classroom in grade 2. And if you're wondering, why do you have 26? Why don't you just put some of the, a student from the 26 into the classroom with the 24 and make more 25s? There's reasons behind that. Sometimes a classroom of 26 may not see all 26 of those students throughout the course of their day. There might be a cluster of kids with some special needs who spend a lot of time in the resource room, so we take that into consideration. Just wanted to mention that our building custodians have done an outstanding job, uh, this summer, uh, getting our buildings ready, as usual. So I'd just like to just thank, you know, thank our four custodians, the two at McKinley and the two at Adams. It was fun the other day, Superintendent Ness will probably mention this, but we were able to grill across the street in the park and, uh, feed all of our custodial staff in the district, so that was a fun, a fun lunch. And then should just mention too, uh, you know, you start to see many classroom teachers start trickling in. Um, we've already seen, uh, many of them already starting to put their rooms together, so we appreciate their work, uh, that they've already put in. Just to update you on our staff, ironically enough, the, the year that, um, Mrs. Rund and I request three, uh, reading corps members from Minnesota Reading Corps, we're only able to find one. Um, in past years, we've requested two, we've been awarded two, and we've been able to find two. So then the year we decide to up that one more and to try to find three, to put one in each elementary building, we can only find one. And that's not unique to Fergus Falls, that's kind of across the state of Minnesota. They're having a difficult time filling their reading corps positions. Uh, the other piece that we're just still looking, uh, to fill is a, a noon supervisor position at Adams and a noon supervisor position at McKinley. And in fact, for the first time ever, I even included a little blurb in my back-to-school letter that all parents will receive, just letting them know if they're interested in some part-time work to let me know. Uh, speaking of back-to-school letters, our goal is to get those in the mail on Thursday of this week, which means families would see the back-to-school letters either Friday or Saturday. Um, of course, the, the, probably the most important piece to the families when they receive those letters is they get their child's teacher assignment. And then they get that just in time to, uh, attend our open house on Wednesday, the 31st, from 5:00 to 7:00. So, um, letters will be going out, and that's, it's always a big day, it's a big task getting to that point. Um, but, uh, we're feeling good about where we're at with things, um, at McKinley and Adams right now. Would that all entertain any questions?
Any questions from the board?
Scott, with the kindergarten roundup, what numbers had you projected roughly for kindergarten?
Yeah. Um, I'd have to go back and look, I'm guessing 185. Generally, we have about 65% of our incoming kindergarten class show up and register on registration night in March.
I know you, uh, get all these requests for teachers, you know, so they're going to get their letter on Thursday or Friday, and those are, they're pretty well set, correct? Unless there's some really extenuating circumstance, uh, correct?
Yeah, I mean, they're set. We, we, we'll, we'll try to work with teach, uh, families as much as we can, but, um, if there's something that they need to let me know, they need to let me know a long time ago. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Moving on to our, our next elementary principal, from Cleveland, Tandy Runge.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, I had a couple of things to share about summer programming. There's a lot of exciting things that happen over the course of the summer, and one of them is Otter Adventures. And, um, the Otter Adventures program runs throughout the school year, but there are also, um, summer sessions involved with that program. Um, Cleveland, um, host Cleveland, the Cleveland building hosted, um, successful summer sessions for Otter Adventures. Um, these sessions run two consecutive weeks in each of the summer months, June, July, and August. Um, and it's, this year, we had students, um, enrolled, um, from those who have completed 1st grade, um, through 7th grade. And so a nice bright, uh, nice age range of students. There were up to 38 students who attended, um, any of those sessions. And over the course of the summer, um, attendance fluctuates a little bit because of summer camps and family trips and the like, but it was a very, very good turnout, um, for Otter Adventures this summer. Um, Kristin Tool is the person who oversees Otter Adventures and works with all of the enrollments and communications with families, and she does an outstanding job with that, with that. Um, along with the teachers who are, um, providing Otter Adventures instruction during the school year and summer as well. So, thanks very much for, those folks for creating a, a good learning environment for those kids this summer. Um, another summer program that's happened annually that's, um, um, offered through Prairie Wetlands Learning Center is the Summer Explorers Biology Camp. That's held at Prairie Wetlands Learning Center. Mona Davis, our 4th grade Prairie Science class teacher is involved with that, that, um, camp. And this year, um, they capped registration at 40 students. And I just peeked at the registration and, um, counted up how many of our 544 students attended, and 31 of those 40 students were 4th and 5th graders here, um, in our district. So that was really exciting. And, um, it's open to anybody across the nation, and there was one student from Nebraska who attended this summer, and that program was, um, held in June. Um, we are excited to welcome new and returning staff to Cleveland. Um, Michael Swenson is returning to the, uh, be a 4th grade teacher, um, a position he had previously had at Cleveland. Uh, we hired Kyle Ryland, a new 4th grade teacher. Um, Katie Hosh is joining, um, the special ed department on a full-time basis. And those folks, um, as, um, Mr. Koberg mentioned, they're, have already been in their classrooms getting things set up and ready to go, so, um, we've welcomed them, they have their keys and, and access to their classrooms. Um, Valerie Johnson will be providing music instruction at Cleveland this year. Um, Emma Van Valkenburg, a special ed co-op employee, will be, um, joining us on a part-time basis, providing speech and language services. Um, and then we were fortunate enough to, um, to meet a gentleman named Dean Gutzmer, who will join us with, with noon supervision. So, we do, um, have secured three noon supervisors at Cleveland for this school year. With the growth of the RTI program, Pam Anderson and Jean Lervey will be working collaboratively in that regard. Um, one of the first, um, tasks that they complete is the universal screening, um, which is a reading, um, screening given to all students in the building. Um, it's a tool that helps us identify students who would really benefit from, um, some reading support, um, learning some reading strategies to help them become more proficient readers, um, over time. And that is done in the, in the fall, um, mid-year, and then again at the end of the year to measure, um, overall student, um, reading gains in that regard.
Can you briefly explain what RTI is?
Yep. Um, RTI stands for Response to Intervention, um, and we use scientifically proven strategies to, um, teach students specific reading skills, um, whether it be fluency, um, um, phonetic learning, um, sight word recognition, um, just a whole host of different reading strategies, um, to help students increase their proficiency in reading. And that just helps them over all curricular areas as well, so really boosts that literacy. Um, this fall, we have, um, two, two teachers hosting student teachers. Um, Carol Rangel is hosting a practicum student for the first three weeks of school. Um, Nikki Weldy is hosting a student teacher who's completing her final student teaching experience. And this is one of those ways that teachers really feel, um, they can give back to the profession. We were all new, um, teachers are student teaching at one point in time, so we are grateful, um, when teachers, um, are interested in hosting a student teacher. And this year, we have, um, two to begin with. Um, oftentimes, the Prairie Science class teachers are hosting interns with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, um, and I, I'm not sure if there are any interns at this point in time, but that often is, um, often the case as well. Um, other exciting things to note at Cleveland and Prairie Science class, um, the banks of lockers are fully installed and ready for students to move into them. Um, those are in the, mainly in the 3rd grade hallway, um, just across the hallway from the lockers that were existing. Um, the two projection units and screens are installed in the gym. Um, that was part of the Fieden Health Curriculum, um, having to do with the heart rate monitors that, um, students will be using. It's a bonus, um, for us as well, uh, we will be able to use those for assemblies and special programs, maybe add some features to those programs too. And we haven't fully explored this, but it really becomes a, a nice presentation space too for staff, for staff meetings or, um, larger group meetings, um, giving us a little extra elbow room and then, um, projection screens that everyone would be able to see. And at Prairie Wetlands Learning Center, if you've driven by there recently, you've seen the big equipment, drilling wells, um, a new HVAC system is being installed there, um, and that will certainly benefit the, the educational wing, um, as well. And then I do have a brief, um, update on Cleveland and Cleveland enrollment. Um, and this is at the end of last week. Um, in 3rd grade, we had 192 students enroll. Um, that creates four section, and we have seven sections of 3rd grade. There will be four sections with 27 students, um, three sections with 28. In 4th grade, we had, uh, 206 students registered. Um, in 4th grade, we'll have seven classroom sections as well, um, that creates four sections of 29 students, three sections of 30. And in 5th grade, we had 178 students registered, and this creates sections of 29 and 30. Um, so overall, we're looking at a current enrollment of 576. And just as, um, Scott alluded to, we're, we're checking the mail and email all the time, um, as we learn about families who have moved from our community, um, is also, and also families who are moving into our community. And we've, um, provided several tours of Cleveland and Prairie Wetlands, um, here in the last couple of weeks for student, our families that are moving in, um, so that they can get a peek at, um, those facilities and make some decisions, so. And that's my report for today. Any questions?
Questions from the board?
All right, thank you.
Our secondary principal, Dean Monk.
Hi, good morning, everyone. Just to follow up on a couple of things that the, uh, elementary brought up, um, we hope to have, um, middle school letters out by Friday of this week. Um, we understand we have to have that information into people's hands by the following Wednesday, but we try to leave it till the last minute because we have so many drops in ads that are still happening, uh, over the course of even this week. Um, so, we'll hopefully get those letters out on Friday, the 26th here, so they should arrive like on Saturday or Monday then. And, um, uh, that'll give our 6th graders a chance to see their teacher assignment and who they're coming in to see directly on the evening of the 31st. And then our, our 7th and 8th grade, and really 7th through 12th grade, um, we really encourage them to come to our open house on Wednesday, the 31st, because they will get their actual schedule on that evening. So we don't hand them out ahead of time, uh, so it's kind of our large carrot that we offer out there to get students to come in, uh, meet their teaching teams, uh, walk around the building a little bit, check out their schedule, find out where their particular rooms are. Uh, so that'll be all happening on, uh, the 31st. Hiring status, um, so far, uh, as of today, we're complete. Uh, you know, when I come to work on August, uh, I, I just kind of check my, uh, mail and my, um, voicemail and just make sure nobody's quit today. Uh, you know, a lot of times that happens for good and great reasons, uh, but it does create some extra burden when we're looking to hire folks, uh, in, in August, as well Elaine knows. But, uh, we're looking for, uh, confirmation on one special education pair, otherwise we think we're, uh, complete. Uh, and, over the course of the last month, we've had some interesting hires that have, had to be made. Um, so we, um, just to talk a little bit about those, um, we were, um, able to secure a certified nursing assistant instructor along with a health core curriculum class that we're gonna be offering. Uh, this is a new offering for us, for this year. Um, this goes back to the beginning of really last year. We started meeting with, uh, some of the local providers here, uh, with Pioneer Home and LB Homes of Brown Home. Uh, we started meeting with, uh, M State college representatives, uh, and the whole idea here is to see if we could offer a nursing assistant class right within the high school. Um, we did a lot of research, uh, and what we found out was that, um, our local providers here in town really have, uh, grant funds and resources that are readily available, uh, 'cause they're in such need of, of these, uh, students, young adults, whoever would like to come work as nursing assistants. Um, so as we offer this new class, it is gonna be fully funded by those grant funds. Um, and we were able to, um, acquire, um, Rachel, who is a, uh, has been a nurse substitute for us here, um, and we found out was fully qualified with which to teach this course. Um, it's not just about, uh, being a CNA. Uh, it's also this health core curriculum is really the majority of the curriculum that is being offered, and, uh, we're gonna put this into a two-hour block class first thing in the morning. Um, and, uh, so really, these students are getting like 75 hours worth of the CNA part of the course, but they're also getting over 100 hours in relationship to this health core curriculum, which should really make the class attractive across our whole student body. Um, if we've got some student that's interested in being a doctor someday, this would be a perfect class for them to get, uh, not only their CNA started, but also explore that whole field. Um, so we're really excited about getting that going. Um, we're gonna use one of our science rooms in our 7th and 8th grade wing as the lab area, uh, for this course. Um, we also had to search for an auto instructor, which is not easy to find as well. Um, we have an outstanding auto, uh, program, uh, transportation program here within our high school, and we wanted to keep that going. And, uh, with Joel Hykes, he's a, he's a local young man here, um, he's been in the industry probably almost 15 years. Um, so he's really excited about taking on this challenge, uh, to continue to work through and offer our auto program here. Um, and then we were fortunate enough also to find a school nurse, and we really had a qualified pool of applicants this go-around for that position. Um, and we were lucky enough to find a young gal, uh, who happens to be married to the new science teacher that we hired. So, worked out, we got a good two-for-one on that deal, um, as well. As these guys mentioned as well, uh, a special thank you needs to go out to our custodial staff, um, in several of our buildings, of course. Um, they get a miraculous job of cleaning done despite the fact we send people at them every day. Um, this is a very busy building during the summertime, uh, and yet they're able to work all the way around that and get this facility up and going, uh, again for the start of the school year. So we just appreciate their efforts, and, uh, um, it was great to have a chance to host them for lunch, uh, this last week. Um, so that's what I've got. Any questions?
Any questions from the board?
Dean, for that CNA class, how many kids have been registered for that?
Yeah, you know, they, um, because of the lab work that needs to go on and the restrictions that they have, um, it's really our goal to keep it under 15 students per semester. Uh, so I believe we have about 11 and 13 signed up right now. Um, and for the first year, that's, that's good numbers for us to be able to manage. Um, we do have to take, some of the clinicals have to go off-site. Uh, I believe we're gonna be going over to Pioneer, uh, for those, and, uh, and so just having a small group to work with, and then they have restrictions. But, we're excited about those students being willing to kind of donate two hours of their day, one, one semester or the other, uh, to be able to get this course in.
You've mentioned Pioneer LB met with you. What are they doing as far as costs and the, the sharing of costs with the district?
Yeah, well, one thing is we, we have to set up a practice lab here. So all of the equipment that will, we'll be, uh, we'll be bringing in four or five hospital beds into this science room and setting up individual stations in there. Um, so all of that equipment, there's like a page and a half list, um, they are fully providing. Um, and then they are also gonna reimburse us for the cost of the instructor. Um, and M State's involvement in all of this is that this, these courses can be offered for college credit. So we, uh, we hope to be able to get at least half of the students within the class that'll indicate, uh, and it'll be a two-credit and four-credit combined class, uh, as well. So that's where their involvement comes in. And also, we become a satellite site to their teaching station up at M State, which helps us a little bit in relationship to getting that area certified. So it's, it's really a huge cooperative effort trying to make it work.
Any questions from the board?
All right, thank you.
Superintendent Ness?
Well, I'm gonna jump right to Mark Maston for buildings and grounds updates, why don't you go ahead?
Sure. Uh, electrical project, uh, was the big project this summer. Uh, that's pretty much complete. We had our last, uh, um, core outage last on the 13th, and then a couple of servers going down, and I think it went pretty well. Uh, sidewalk project here along Randolph Avenue is nearing completion despite the rain. Uh, rains seem to pour on them every single day there for a while, but, uh, we still have to get the, um, flashing the signs and stuff up at that crosswalk down there. Otherwise, that project isn't moving along, and it'll be, at least the sidewalk portion will be done before start of school here. Uh, we still have a roofing project to do over at Adams, where we basically seal coat that, uh, that I haven't heard from them yet, but, uh, they were planning on doing that sometime here in September, uh, early October. So, uh, let's see.
And that can be done with school going on?
Yes, it's just basically rolling, uh, a membrane out onto the, uh, a liquid membrane of the, uh, on roof. Uh, we have a bunch of minor little projects going on around the district as well, and, uh, should have those up, you know, the new buildings and grounds. Uh, it started here, Eric Strom, uh, he's learning the ropes, finding out what machinery actually does and what school grounds are and what it's not, and so it's going along very well.
Okay, uh, our principals talked a lot about staffing already, so we've got, uh, some noon hour supervisors, I think, uh, to hire yet, and then also, I think you're talking about math and reading corp. Uh, with the teaching, the teachers all hired, but we haven't gotten licenses for all of them, some of, some of them need waivers or variances or whatever else, and so that's, uh, that. Uh, activities department, Mr. Abrams, he has a calendar set up so people can go to our school website and, and go under activities and sign up for all the different sports and activities that we have and, uh, get the schedule, because the activities are starting already, so there's some competitions that are starting. Um, legislation, uh, no special session, it doesn't look like. And that's unfortunate because it's certainly a big bonding bill, but the biggest thing for schools was there was some tax breaks for, uh, specifically farmers, where, uh, school districts trying to pass a bond, they would've had about a 40% break for the farmer, where the state would've paid for the, uh, the share of the farmers. And, uh, so, uh, you, you never know if one side, uh, caves a little bit and they decide to get back, but it doesn't look good right now. Uh, it's in the politics. I think they're, they're managing the, the election day coming up in November 8th is a, is a big one, and each side is banking on their position will allow them to take over the House and the Senate, so we will find out. If you want to find out more about the legislative session and the updates, so September 14th, right here in this room, Minnesota Rural Education Association. right here in this room, Minnesota Rural Education Association will be hosting their meeting. I believe that is from 7:00 to 9:00. I'll get that out. And then on the 21st, over at Lakes Country Service Cooperative, we have the School Board Association, so lots of update. They go around, they do grassroots meetings, and they try to develop their platform. Both of those are heavily lobbying organizations, and so we need to give our input. The Fall In-service, they alluded, principals alluded to, the big day next week is Wednesday is open houses, but it first starts out on Monday, where we have workday for staff, but we also have our principal meetings in the early afternoon with staff. Tuesday, really excited about Tuesday, we have a new evaluation cycle coming into play, and we have trainers coming in. So, from Charlotte Danielson, who is our framework for teaching, that's our evaluation is based off of Charlotte Danielson's work. Margaret Leefree is coming in, and will do questioning and discussion techniques. She'll do a keynote, and then she'll do a breakout session with each grade, K-2, 3, 5, 6, 8, and 9, 12. And then coinciding with those breakouts, we have another component is designing coherent instruction. Eileen Weber from the Service Cooperative will be presenting that. And then we have two other components that are really student management type things. So, managing student behavior is another component, and communicating with families. And our principals, along with Kristi Hastings, will be talking about. So, the principals will give the school version on communicating with families, but then there's also some legal things that also, you know, joint custody is an example of, you have to be careful with different things there. So, Kristi Hastings from Pemberton Law will partner with that, communicating with families, and then also managing student behavior. So, that'll be a full-day training there. Then Wednesday is our open houses, 5:00 to 7:00. Our elementaries are open, and Tindie, it's also, it's Cleveland and the Prairie, correct?
That's right.
So, they will know in their letter, they will know which building that they should go to.
Yes.
Okay. So, Cleveland is both. Adams and McKinley is 5:00 to 7:00. And then Mr. Monk, I believe 5:00 to 8:00 is here, correct? So, 5:00 o'clock, 8:00 o'clock. And the big thing here is the foyer will be set up. Students will get their schedule. That's the big one. So, they'll know their teachers, know where they're going, and then they can actually trace their steps and figure out their schedule for the day. But it's just about easing their anxiety, if there is any, but they can find their locker and get their locker combo. They can pay for lunch the first day, so they're really set to go on that first day of school. And then the Thursday is the fall, excuse me, the district meeting. And we start out today by the FFEA announces the Teacher of the Year. We do service pins, but we do also, so a very important thing for all staff, employee right-to-know. So, some required training there. We have the Ferguson Falls Police Department coming in and doing safety on run, hide, fight. So, if there's an intruder in our building, what do you do? Do you run? Do you hide? Do you fight? There is some criteria that they'll do training there, and we also have some suicide prevention training along with the district meeting, where I give lots of information about the district and employee handbook type things. Last week, we held a, we had a great retreat. All day Wednesday, we were in here with all of our principals. We talked a lot about the district goals, and then how do they go to building goals and PLC goals and individual goals. So, really, really did some leadership training and goals training, and then did a lot of planning for the presentations that are coming up here. ACT scores, I can't tell you what we actually got until Wednesday. Everything's sequestered nationwide until Wednesday. I will just say is we beat the state average, and so that'll come out Wednesday. And that's an interesting one. It'll be, did Minnesota State top of the nation? Because this is the first year where all kids took the ACT. So, it was last year as juniors, and now the ACT counts the senior score. So, we'll see if we stayed number one or slipped a little bit. We'll find out. And I think that's, lots of stuff there. I'll stop there. Questions?
Questions? Thank you. Superintendent Ness. Moving on to our general consent items. We have the school board minutes of our regular school board meeting held on August 9th, 2016. Personnel, Superintendent Ness.
Yes. Couple hires here, Janet Schwer, Special Ed Para, along with Nicole Sandford. Resignations, Liz Handstead. Kaylee Peterson is a compiness for our choirs. Julie By is noon hour supervisor. And we have a retirement, Cheryl Tomhav is a cafeteria worker that retired. And certified hires, Jennifer Cohors is the school nurse. Jennifer Jensen is ABE, which is Adult Basic Ed, and she'll be working with that program. And then Joel Hykes is the auto teacher. And those are all, well, Jennifer Cohors, the school nurse, and Joel are full-time, and then ABE is a part-time position. Mr. Monk, you mentioned the CNA career instructor, that's Rachel Kalowski, and she is a .33 FTE. And then an annual thing, we have TRA Part-Time Teacher Program. Lynn Orin is in that program, has been for a number of years, so that's an annual approval there. So, recommend approval of all those personnel items.
Do we have a motion to approve the general consent items?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? General consent items pass. Moving on to all business, we have the Policy 520 Student Survey. We had our first reading on August 9th. Do we have a motion to approve the student survey policy?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
The key thing with this policy is it's informing parents what surveys that are being taking place, and then what they can do if they want to have their student, their child take the survey, not take the survey. But it's really what's included in that survey. The main one that we do is the Minnesota Student Survey, which is given every three years. It was just given this last year. So, really, this policy won't take, there won't be any action on it for a couple of years here.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, policy, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Policy passes. Moving on to new business, we have the 2016, 2017 Facility Lease between the Ferguson Falls Area Family YMCA and ISD 544. Mark Mastin, you want to speak on this?
Sure. This is an annual lease between the school district and the YMCA for the use of their gymnasium. We teach some non-public school students at this facility, and while they're there, they're considered our kids, and so we generate state aid on for hiring a teacher and so forth. We've done this for many years, and they asked for like the $500 increase, I think was, approximately $15,000 lease.
Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We have a resolution on retirement of Cheryl Tomhav, where Cheryl Tomhav began her employment with the Ferguson Falls Public Schools in September 1991, and where Cheryl has been a valued employee with the Ferguson Falls Public Schools for the past 25 years, and where Cheryl has worked in various cafeteria positions throughout our district, and now therefore be resolved by the Ferguson Falls School Board to thank Cheryl Tomhav for her 25 years of dedicated service to the Ferguson Falls Public Schools. Will somebody offer that resolution, move for its adoption?
I'll offer the resolution and move for its adoption.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
All right. Wayne Danielson?
Yes.
Matt Lenke?
Yes.
Del Tonset?
Yes.
Jeff Horman?
Yes.
Melanie Cole, yes? The resolution passes.
Thank you. Item number three, we have the 2016, 2017 Memorandum of Agreement between the University of Minnesota-Cristen and ISD 544 for college and the high school. This is an annual agreement to have Brad Stanislawski teach precalculus, calculus, and college physics. With that, do we have a motion?
To approve?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number four, we have the 2016, 2018 Collective Bargaining Agreement between the School Board of ISD 544 and Education Minnesota-Ferguson Falls Special Education Para Professional Association. Do we have a motion? To approve?
I move that we approve.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Mark, why don't you give an update on the settlement and also other groups that we have to settle with yet?
This settlement was within the parameters that the board had given, with the exception of, they actually took a $0.05 an hour less on the first year so they could add longevity step in their contract. Otherwise, all other pieces of the contract offered that we provide in work. There are five other groups that are waiting to, that we're waiting to resolve our contracts with. One of them is in the process of voting. The other three, we're just waiting till the end of summer, and now that school will be starting, I'm sure we'll get some meetings going with them again. So, that's where we sit.
Thank you, Mark. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. That concludes our regular school board meeting. Our next regular school board meeting will be Monday, September 12th, right here at the Otter Tail Community Room, Kennedy Secondary School at 5:00 PM. Note the time, 5:00 PM. We also, just for informational purposes, the 2016 Minnesota Rural Education Association Fall Membership Meeting will be Wednesday, September 14th, from 7:00 to 9:00, right here at the Otter Community Room. Otter Pride Night is Friday, September 16th, 2016, and from 5:00 to 7:00 PM at the Kennedy Secondary School Gold Gym. And that is before the football game, which we are playing Detroit-Lakes. So, should be a fun night. And then we have, following this, we'll have a work session, preparation for the start of the school year, and Otter Pride Night. With that, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.